Just as a committee that we feel is a little bit lacking is professional development. So this goal focuses on that a lot. Basically, we just need to really bring all of our staff up to speed. They're all at different levels and we need to individualize the support so that they can all be effective with integrating technology. When you look at our objectives, some of the things that we are going to do to achieve this. One of the things on there is a student help desk kiosk in the middle school, high school library. And you might be thinking, why, why that? When Brandon and I first started, we realized right away that the tech integrators that we have currently working part-time in the middle school and high school, a lot of their time was being taken up with student device issues. So they have one or two periods free a day. Students would come down needing things fixed and they would be helping to troubleshoot that, which is really more the role of the tech support team. And because of that, they weren't really getting into classrooms with teachers or providing any training for teachers and things like that, which is really what they should be doing as tech integrators. So by creating this help desk kiosk, students will be able to come down to the library, sign out a ticket, just saying what the problem with their device is, turn in their device, sign out a loner device, and then the tech support team will take care of the problems and email the students when their device is ready to be picked up. So this will really change things for the tech integrators. They'll have those one to two periods now free to work with teachers or provide training. And you know, some of them were kind of looking to us for answers like where do we begin? What, what do we do to support teachers? Because they haven't really had a lot of time in that role yet. So we're trying to send them to professional development to give them the skills they need to support everybody. And there's three main areas we want them to look at when it, or four actually, when it comes to their training. The SAMR model, which is actually a framework for technology integration that I'll talk more about in a minute. The ISTI standards, these are international standards for technology integration. They're standards for students, educators and leaders. So for example, there's things like students using digital tools to broaden their perspectives and communicate globally. That's one example of a standard. So it gives you an idea of the kinds of things that are in there. And then New York State just came out with new computer science standards. We need to align our curriculum and certain courses to those standards. And we also have to achieve certain goals across all grade levels. So things like digital citizenship are in those standards. So we need to start looking at those and seeing what things we need to do and how we need to train teachers for it. And instructional coaching methods and just continual training and different technology tools that are out there are things that tech integrators should always work on because it'll just help them be effective in their roles. So in addition to training for our tech integrators, that leads to more training for our staff. So they'll be able to provide individualized training. Some teachers may need one-on-one support. They may want to have the tech integrator push into the classroom, demo something or just assist while they try something. They might want to provide small group sessions for people after school or on Zoom. I do have them planning things for the next upcoming conference day. So there's just going to be a variety of things that they provide. But along with that, we also recognize that we need a little bit more time available for tech integration support. We have currently, like I said, three tech integrators. They're all at the middle school and high school. They have one to two periods a day that are free. Their schedule really doesn't allow them to support the elementary school. They support GLP a little bit, but really their schedule matches up more with the middle and high school teachers. So we're looking to see what we can do. Can we find some creative solutions to have some tech integration support available to all teachers at all times? So with the SAMR model, this is actually an acronym. It stands for substitution, augmentation, modification and redefinition. And these are different levels of technology integration. It's kind of like a staircase. So you start with substitution. That's the lowest level. So an example of that would be posting worksheets online for students to complete. I mean, we're not using the technology really to change instructional practice. You're just using the technology. When it comes to augmentation, that's going a little bit further than substitution. So maybe using things like hyperlinks in a document or having students save their work in a digital portfolio would be an example. And then there's modification. This is where instructions really begins to change. So utilizing things like an online chat forum or a back channel during class. So students who are more shy can still share their thoughts would be an example. And redefinition is the highest level of technology integration. And that's where we utilize technology to do things we never could possibly do without it. So an example would be communicating with a class in another country on Zoom or having a guest author speak to students who lives in another state or doing a virtual field trip. We're going to visit all different levels of this model when we integrate technology. And we're not always going to hit redefinition, but we want to aim to hit it very often so that we are providing the most innovative educational experience that we can to our students. So how are we going to monitor and evaluate goal one? Every year we do a teacher survey that where they reflect on their practice, their professional development needs and how they integrate technology. So we're going to continue to do that at Eden. We're also going to monitor attendance at professional development events, especially the optional ones to see if everybody's jumping on board and, and learning about things. We're going to track our software usage and also eventually, you know, talk to some students. We have student reps on our committee, so see how their experiences are going as well. Goal two is school community connections and equitable access. The pandemic really showed us that everybody does not have the same access to the internet and digital tools at home. And this could be for economic reasons. It could also be just geographic location. You know, we're in a rural area. Sometimes, you know, high-speed internet just isn't really available. We also want to prioritize clear communication with our community because we know that creates more of a connection between the school and the community. And that's really important. So goal two objectives, we're going to follow the state requirement of administering the new student digital equity survey. That is a new thing that's coming out. So very soon we are going to be sending out a Google form for parents to complete for each student. And it has questions on it about, you know, internet access in the home, devices available, things like that. Obviously, some parents won't be able to access that online. So we will also have a paper version available that's scannable through the BOCs. We're going to investigate potential community partnerships where our school community members could go and access the internet, maybe access a device to use such as the Boys and Girls Club, our library, churches in the area, the Chamber of Commerce, the town hall. These were just some ideas shared at the tech committee meeting. We will, in terms of communication, we want to make sure that our parents understand how to use things that are available to the students. One of the things that came up at our meeting was when everything shut down and students were at home, sometimes parents didn't really know how to help their children. And we don't want anyone to be frustrated. So we're going to have the tech integrators work on providing trainings on the parent portal, Google Classroom, things that they're using in class. These could be live online trainings or recorded videos. We're going to try to do a variety of things. In terms of continuing with clear communication, the elementary school is updating their report card design to make it easier for parents to understand where students are at. We're redesigning the district website to make sure everybody can find information quickly and easily. And we're just going to continue to use the tools we've been using to communicate in multiple ways. School Messenger, our website, social media. So how are we going to monitor goal two? We will eventually put out another survey that just asks, you know, how are we doing with communication? So that'll give us some more information in addition to the digital equity survey. Now I'm going to turn it over to Brandon. He's going to talk about goal three, which is technology, equipment and infrastructure.
Thanks Lori. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank the superintendent and the board for inviting me to speak. I will keep it brief because I will talk and talk and talk about technology and equipment and all that good stuff. So I'm on a time limit. Technology, equipment and infrastructure. It's obviously a very large goal. It's very important because without it, the kids wouldn't be doing all the cool stuff that Lori's talking about and planning on doing. So how are we going to continue to support that and what's it going to look like? The first objective is we need to define a sustainable hardware replacement plan for all our devices. It needs to be realistic and it does need to be sustainable. It has to be three to five years out and it needs to be really, what are we using? Or what do we have? What are we using? How are we going to fund it and is it realistic to everybody? It's really, it's not fair to the users to say, oh, maybe this year you'll get a new computer. It depends. We'll see. You'll know maybe in February, maybe in March. And then come April, well, we couldn't do it. So if you were planning on anything for next year, you can't. And we'll try it again. I'd like to go and say, here's the plan. You know what it's going to be year two, year three, year four. It's also not fair to the board and for budget development. You, you should know a couple of years out. I mean, these prices stay pretty consistent. We have one-to-one throughout the district now. And now it's just fine tuning and tweaking it and getting it into a good, solid plan. So people know, so a teacher knows I'm going to get a new computer in five years or four years from Chromebooks or whatnot. It was brought up and the students, actually, I had a really good conversation with our two student reps on the tech committee. And I was like, what do your friends think about what's going on? What, you know, do you think the tech is good in the school? What do you think? And they said, the biggest thing is the Chromebooks are old and they're slow. And they're right, they're five years old. And originally it was, well, we'll make them last five or six years. Realistically, you're trying to get five or six years out of a $200 device when most people with their phones, they're $1,000, they're replacing them every two years because they're slowing down. So that was the biggest complaint and I understand that. And we're going to try and shorten it and figure it out. The next glaring need that jumped right out immediately is we need to standardize technology across the district. It doesn't have to be the same as a K classroom is in an 11th grade classroom, but there should be some standardization. A few of the teachers have even expressed that go classroom to classroom or push in. They said, I planned this great lesson on a smartboard. I walked in, it's a different model because we, the teacher wanted this different model instead of a smartboard. Now I can't do it. Another teacher was, I walked in and I wanted to use the document camera. It's a completely different hookup. I spent 25 minutes doing it. It's like, okay, I understand why you're frustrated with that. You should be able to walk into a classroom and know you're going to have a hookup so you can hook your laptop and/or desktop up to a large display board. And it should be the same type of software. So you can do your presentations in fourth grade and then if you have to go to third grade. So that's important. Even clerical positions, when people fill in, there's been a few times where, oh, I worked here and I had a Windows computer, but I went to the GLP and they had a Mac. I was so confused and lost and frustrated and I'm trying to fill in. And it's a week and it's stress. So they should be able to go district to district and should have the same level of technology, no matter where they sit. And then this leads us to part of Lori's plan with professional development. If we have a standardization, we can really start to build capacity and training on it. We can say, okay, we're going to do 101 level training with things. Now we're going to get some teachers really involved and they can do 201 level training and 301 training and things like that. And they can come back and say, we have new people coming in. Here's the technology that you're going to have to learn. Here's some of the old trainings we've done and you can develop stuff from there. So that's another key component. My favorite, but I won't talk a lot about it, is supporting the backend, the servers, the network, the switches, all the stuff locked away in the closets that nobody wants to talk about except me. We'll continue to maintain that and I'll make sure we're where we need to be. You follow manufacturers' recommendations and things like that. But if that stuff's not kept up, none of the front stuff in the classroom is going to work and people are going to be unhappy. And just because we standardize doesn't mean we're not going to continue to evolve and research new things. We're always going to be looking at new technology that comes out. There's all sorts of stuff. Lori and I just got a thing about drone racing now in technology classes and things like that. So it's not like we're closing off the world and saying, no, we're only going to do these few things. So we're going to constantly look at that and research it and see if it'll work for us and our students and staff. And how are we going to make sure we're doing the right thing? Well, every year we have a budget development review. I'm constantly looking at things. We are almost done completing a district-wide inventory. So I'll be able to say, oh, okay, this looks like it's working good. Or hey, this year, instead of, we don't have to buy whatever, 400 Chromebooks, we can buy 250. So maybe we could do something else or things like that and kind of smooth it out. I know in the past there had been some budget surplus. So hey, let's buy Chromebooks for the kids. Well, that's not fair. Five years down the line, when all of a sudden, oh, we need $500,000 to replace stuff because five years ago we had a little bit of extra money. So I'm always looking at that. I'm always talking to people, trying to get input. In the assistive technology piece, we're talking, reading. I'm finding out some really interesting things from the PPS personnel and working with some of the OT people. And we're always going to look at that and say, okay, are we helping these kids that really need it with some type of special accommodations? Goal four, I pushed for this to be in there because this is something that through my career, I've really developed and it's part of my vision is technology services as a whole. It's customer service. That's really what this is. We're here to help people. And I really truly, the first thing I say is, okay, we're here to help. We're here to get you through a barrier, whatever it is. We'll figure it out and that's our first job. The first thing I've been looking at since I got here is improving the help desk request tracking system. We currently use a system that was more designed for custodial requests and inventory control. It's not really meant for ease of access for users. They have to log in, create an incident, check rooms, things like that. They're already frustrated because they can't log into their computer. And then we're telling them, oh, go log into something else so you can get help. That, I don't believe that should be true. I think they should be able to call, send an email, send a text, get help. We'll figure it out. And that's just not staff. I truly believe parents should be able to contact us with questions and so should the kids. The kids shouldn't have to be bothering their teacher saying, my mom's having trouble with the parent portal. Can you let tech know about it? No, send us an email. It'll create a ticket on the backend. I'll be able to generate reports, look at things, stuff like that. So stuff, you know, little things that I think that I've found that can really make people less frustrated when it comes to technology problems. Lori spoke about it a little bit, but establishing a student managed help desk. Some of the honor society kids have already said, hey, we would like to go and, you know, learn some of this stuff. Can you show us some of this basic stuff? And there's some things to work out with it, but you could start very simple and that thing can just evolve to get these kids that are interested in a field that are really doing nothing else but sitting in a study hall, doing something that interests them at least, you know, instead of just sitting, sleeping in study halls. So that's another goal we're trying to get to. Professional development for myself and my staff. I'm really big on it. I have told my staff, I want you to pick one subject and we'll spend, I'll spend an hour or two a week and we will learn about it. You can come over to my office, we'll sit down, we'll go through things and I'll show you because I believe everybody should be cross-trained. You know, everybody, there should be capacity. I go by the hit by the bus rule. Nothing should come to a stop just because one person is sick or out or whatnot like that. Somebody should be able to step in and at least steer the ship for a little while. In monitoring evaluation, I'm always asking in meetings, in admin council, or if I'm even just in talking to a teacher or whatever, what do you think? Is everything going good? Is it not going good? Tell me what's going on. My kids will tell me. I have three and they'll be like, what are you doing to us with this? This program is not good. And I'm like, calm down, you really need it. So always looking for feedback multiple ways. We can send out surveys. I find a lot of face-to-face. I get into some really good conversations in the hallway with teachers and stuff and learn a lot that way. And with that, I will turn it back to Lori for the exciting topic of data security.
Okay, data security. We are required to maintain safety and data security in our district, but we wanted to put this in the plan so we could reassure people that we are in fact doing it. If you've ever received, you know, the phone call about how your car warranty has expired or, you know, someone has cashed in on your Amazon account, spent thousands of dollars. You know that there's a lot of scammers out there, unfortunately. It's becoming an increasing problem across the area, across the country. Every single day I get at least a couple of emails about some kind of phishing scam that's happening. Maybe somebody's impersonating Google or Microsoft and trying to get people to enter their login credentials. So it's a scary world right now and we have to prioritize this. So what are we doing about it? Every year I look at our list of third-party vendors, our software providers, and make sure that our agreements are up to date and that they are complying with all of our requirements. I provide ongoing data security and protection training to all staff. So what this looks like, if you're a new employee, you get the three module course that's online that's provided through BOCs. It's very in-depth. And then once you complete that, you're just required to do a refresher with me every year and hear, you know, updates on different things that are going on and best practices. I go to data protection officer meetings through BOCs and I hear about emerging threats and, you know, different things districts can do to protect themselves. And then I come back and I share that information with the district so we can make sure that we're on top of this at all times. How will we monitor and evaluate this? Just make sure we keep attendance records for all our training and a file of all of our security agreements that we have with all the different software providers. And that, those are our goals for the next tech plan. But before we end, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the technology committee members who helped us create this plan. The board representatives on our committee are Donald Sutphen and Ellen Kinley. Our parent representatives are Brenda Siz, Phoebe Canisto, Jennifer Sullivan and Katie Zittle. Our student reps are Lucas Pastwick and Trevor Sam. For the administrators, we have Kelly Morgan LaRosa, Lauren Carter. And for the teachers, we have Danielle Carbone, Christina Dahmer, Rachel Flynn, Amber Clausen, Jeff Meister, Lynn Morgan, Randall Perrison and Sandy West Rishel. So thank you to all of those people for your help with the creation of this plan. And does anybody have any questions?
No question, but just a comment. I'm just really pleased. This is, seems like a very thoughtful and thorough set of goals that you've put together, but I'm really pleased with the emphasis that you put on staff development and support. I think it's so important. It's wonderful to get all the equipment, like you said, but if teachers or students are frustrated with using it, what good is it? So I applaud you for putting such a strong emphasis on that part of it. Thanks.
I'm just going to echo the same thought Ellen had. It's Ellen and I sit on the committee and it's well-attended. We meet monthly, I think in November, we met a couple of times, but it's come together relatively quick, very efficient meetings for the hour that we have. And just the input from the teachers and the students, you know, really sheds the light on, you know, what's, what's going on and what we need to do. And, you know, just having some history, you know, because we're asking some questions of like, why this was bought? And I think Mr. Watson basically hit the nail on the head is like, well, we had extra money. So we just bought some stuff. And I think we need to get away from that and truly come up with that, that replacement plan and that common, you know, hookup when you come into a classroom and you're able, it shouldn't matter where you be, where you're at, what room you're teaching in or what school you're teaching in. You sit down, plug in and you're fully operating. Well, it's, it's not happening right now. And the teachers that are on the committee were telling us about it. So, and you know, let's, let's come up with a plan and then we'll work the plan. So thanks for putting it together. It's, it's been, it's been a pleasure to be on this committee.
Thanks so much. All right, do we have a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? So moving along. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent's consensus, consensus items be approved. Second.
Any discussions? Oh, favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
All the way down. To, keep going. Further, further, further. All the way to public comment is where we are. This is the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
So I'm sure you missed me last month, but I'm back again. Just wanted to start out by letting you guys know that I am a private investigator. So that puts me under the category of mandatory to report. We have the federal law definitions of child abuse and neglect. I won't go through them all. I'll give you the child welfare.gov slash topics. Slash. C A N slash defining. You can look up those definitions for yourself. Sure, most of you have enough computer knowledge. Next, we'd like to go through New York State definition of child abuse and neglect. Physical abuse, citation, social services law, 371. Abuse child, any child younger than 18 who is parent or other personally, person legally responsible for his or her care does any of the following. Inflict or allows to be inflicted upon such child physical injury other than accidental means that causes, creates substantial risk of death, serious or protracted disfigurement, protracted impairment of physical or emotional health or protracted loss or impairment of the function of any bodily organ, such as the lungs, such as the nose, the mouth. Creates or allows to be created a substantial risk of physical injury by other than accidental means that would likely cause death, serious injury, protracted impairment, physical or emotional health or protracted loss or impairment or function to any bodily organ. And you've got the citation, social services law, 371, family court act 1012. Goes over what a neglected child is. Let you guys go over that yourselves. Trying to keep to the two minutes. Citation, family court act 1012, impairment or emotional health includes a state of substantially diminished psychological or intellectual function in relation to, but not limited to such factors as failure to thrive. Think we went over about having to have special classes for kids because they were falling behind due to mask mandates and other mandates that were not actual laws imposed by this board. And then we have self-destructive impulses, ability to think or reason, acting out misbehavior. Such impairment must be attributable to the unwillingness or inability of the respondent to exercise a minimum degree of care toward the child. And then we have mandatory reporters of child abuse and neglect.
So you got 30 seconds left.
That's where I fall. That's where I fall. That's where all of you fall. So it is under. Citation, social services law four twenty, any mandatory reporter who willfully fails to report as required shall be guilty of a class A misdemeanor. That means should any of you not have filed a report with the state of New York? As to the abuses suffered by any children such as mine, who now has to attend speech therapy classes. Since the mask mandates went into effect. I don't expect that all of you are speech therapists, but if any of you were, I'd open you up to. Oh, there you go. So you know, in your basic learning, what was one of the number one things? Okay. Mandatory.
Time's up. Sir, your time's up. Thank you for your time. Anybody else?
Nobody else? Okay. Thank you. So new business resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of provisional clerk typist Patricia Hartman. He accepted effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Hartman for her service to the district. Note, Mrs. Hartman would like to remain on the substitute list. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Then upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cleaner Barbara Baker be accepted effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Note, Mrs. Baker is resigning from a cleaner position in order to be appointed to the position of custodian.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria manager Nancy Elbers be accepted effective November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Note, Mrs. Elbers resigned in order to accept a teacher aide position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Billy Joe Beck be accepted effective December nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Note, Ms. Beck is resigning from a teacher aide position in order to accept a clerk typist position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, now we have appointments. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Catherine Zygash. Be appointed on probation as a registered professional nurse effective November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-one. And ending May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level twelve, step two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Deny Lamarka be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective January seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Deney, sorry, I said it wrong. I'm a slow learner, I'm not gonna tell you. Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after, after successfully completing her probationary period. Jennifer Dibble be granted tenure as a guidance counselor effective January first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary appointment. Barbara Palmieri be permanently appointed as a clerk typist effective January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period. Robert Guglielmi be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective November tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period. Elizabeth Rogers be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Nancy Elbers be appointed on probation as a teacher aide. Effective December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one and ending June twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Barbara Baker be appointed on probation as a custodian. Effective December tenth, twenty twenty-one and ending June ninth, twenty twenty-two. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level eight, step eleven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Daniel Teal be appointed on probation as a bus driver. Effective December ninth, twenty twenty-one and ending June eighth, twenty twenty-two. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level nine, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Grace Seppos, who is certified in physical education. Be appointed as an extended leave substitute teacher at a rate of a hundred thirty-five dollars per day. Effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-one until return of Mrs. Sullivan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hours for pupil personnel employees be adjusted as follows. Physical therapist Jennifer Tamasulo be adjusted to thirty-three hours per week. Certified occupational therapy assistant Jessica Perkins be adjusted to twenty-six hours per week. Occupational therapist Jessica Walsh Leger be adjusted to thirty-seven and a half hours per week.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Barbara Baker be appointed as a temporary custodian to cover the position held by Kristen J. Morano. Effective October fourth, twenty twenty-one until December ninth, twenty twenty-one. When she is appointed as a probationary custodian to fill the position vacated by Michael Schmidt. Salary is, will be based upon CSEA contract level eight, step six.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, twenty-four desks, one folding machine, one cash register. Two drawing tables, three pianos, three air compressors, one ice machine, one vending machine, one water filtration device. Twenty-two cabinets, thirty-eight doors, three magazine racks, ten tables, fifty-three student desks. Forty-nine chairs, eight coolers and twenty chalkboards be declared access and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like we're getting ready for a capital project and. Someone decided to clean some house. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
Good evening. I wanted to share that unfortunately, my school books, which is a program that we use for the cafeteria. And we utilize for parents to put money on an account for things like AP, PSE, T exams. And some field trips that are run through the clubs is increasing its fees for items like. The AP exam, the PSE T from three point seven five per transaction to four point nine five percent of the transaction. The standard fees that are paid of two seventy-five for credit cards and two forty-nine. Two thousand forty-nine cents per check are not changing. So those, those are already in effect, but I wanted to make sure people were aware. The New York State Department of Budget, they are revealing that they do not see any budgetary shortfalls in their projections out to two thousand twenty-five. This is good news as we embark upon the budget season. Our state aid runs, which for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which posted December sixth. Eden is receiving two percent more than estimated or approximately a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. Last but not least, property taxes, which were collected. Every year, property taxes are collected by the local taxpayers and any unpaid taxes are remitted back to the county. Who then pays the district in full. This year only one point five four percent of total tax collections were remitted to the county for collection. It's down from one point five five percent last year. And lastly, I want to wish everybody a happy, happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
So Ms. Sullivan, when do we start the budget process?
Well, officially, I think I started the budget process the day after the last one was passed. But people are now joining me and we've been working on it probably for about the last month. The budget was officially open for processing for other people who enter in their data on December first. And the first presentation, which I know you'll be just anxious for, is the next board meeting.
Thank you for that.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. First off, thank you to Lori and Brandon for their presentation this evening. And for their future focused planning in the area of instructional technology. You're both doing a great job on building forward so that our district continues to have the necessary resources for a successful educational program. So thank you both. Great job tonight. Also, a special thanks to Mrs. Gregory. Over the past two days, Lori has brought a team of teachers. From our middle school and high school to visit Lancaster High School. The purpose was to allow for observations of teachers fully immersed in using the Kagan instructional strategies. The board will remember that Kagan strategies have been a professional development initiative, initiative for the past couple of years. First brought to us by Mrs. LaRosa. So congra, Mrs. Gregory and Mrs. LaRosa continue to collaborate and coordinate. The infusion of this important instructional strategy in our district pre-K through twelve in their respective roles. So really good stuff. Outstanding visits the last two days. Lori reports that our teachers that were able to attend were really appreciative and excited to bring back. To the district what they've learned. So we'll continue to move forward in that area. Last meeting, we had a bit of a discussion about student mental health and I want to continue that today. Earlier this week, the surgeon general released an advisory document entitled protecting youth mental health. This guiding document provides action steps for, for young people, families, educators, healthcare organizations. As well as in specific areas such as social media and community organizations. There is a link in the, in the board version of the superintendent report for you to access the entire document. The, on page nineteen, page nineteen of that document is where educate, the education component is first addressed. So today, the administrative team and I reviewed the document and reflected on those things that are currently underway, as well as those areas that need additional attention. This will be a good guiding document as we move forward to make sure we have the necessary understanding and services to assist our students. Interesting part of that conversation today, I learned that a few years back, our secondary teachers participated in what's called youth mental health first aid training. And I found that interesting because it happens to be one of the tabs that I've had open on my, on my, on my computer for quite a while as I investigate different programs. So I'm glad that there's already an excellent basis for this training in our district. It's designed to help educate educators recognize and respond to potential mental health issues. And we are scheduled for a refresher in the near future. So the more I learn, the better I feel about the shape we're in and, and this particular area. As always, I asked for some updates from our, from our building principals. So I can give you a little bit of information that's been going on in the schools. Mrs. Kinley, you probably already know this, but our middle school and high school folks collected about fifteen hundred pounds of food that was donated to the. Eden North Collins Food Pantry. I'm sure that was much appreciated. Our annual toys for Todd's collection is currently underway and runs from December first to the seventeenth. Bins for collections are located in all of our school buildings. I did get a message from Santa Claus the other day that there's some, some elves hard at work on North Boston Road and a particular wood shop. So we look forward to see the, seeing those donations again from those elves. We've got a high school concert tomorrow evening and that's not even news anymore because we're able to do some really cool things and which are actually normal things, but I'm excited for that. Our middle schoolers decorated ornaments for Eden Heights and Eden Rehab Nursing Center. We've got a grade one holiday concert tomorrow afternoon. That should be a lot of fun as well. And a special thank you to all of our pre-K through five staff and parents for their creativity and flexibility. Regarding parent teacher conferences that happened last weekend or earlier this week. This year, we offered both in-person and Zoom meetings and from what I've heard, they went quite well. Auditions for the elementary musical are underway. This year will be Seussical Junior. Mark your calendars for April seventh and eighth. The show should certainly be, be quite a bit of fun. There was a turkey trot right before our Thanksgiving break. Our grade five students participated. And the plan is to expand that schoolwide next year. No turkeys were harmed in the trot. Earlier today, a really cool event. We had six of our student athletes sign their national letters of intent with their respective colleges. Emily Baloo will be attending Cortland and playing volleyball. Danielle Gephardt is attending Deuville and will be participating lacrosse. Lydia Kobe is attending Tiffin, following her older sister to Tiffin, which I believe is in Ohio. I learned that today. And will be playing softball. Jordan Lauer will be going to Edinburgh, also playing softball. Rihanna O'Connor is attending Cleary and playing lacrosse. And then a name that might be a little bit familiar to some folks on. Up front here is Jessica Zittle. You know that name down, down there? Do you know that name, Jessica Zittle? Will be attending Dennison to continue her studies and her basketball career. So congratulations to all those student athletes. Now finally, it wouldn't be me if I didn't give you a COVID update. So I'm gonna do that. But this is, this is a pretty positive one as well. On Tuesday, December twenty-first, we, along with North Collins School District, will be hosting a second dose vaccination clinic for children ages five to eleven. At the GLP from three thirty to seven PM. As of right now, I'm waiting for a response from the Erie County Department of Health to determine if boosters or vaccinations for those twelve and older. Will be available at the clinic. Once I have that information, we will put out a communication, community wide. By the way, our first dose clinic accommodated one hundred and seventy-six individuals. That's pretty darn good. That's pretty darn good. And I'm proud that we were able to provide our community with that access. So we've heard an awful lot about the uptick in COVID and certainly Eden is no stranger to that. We have a pretty high number of positive cases in town. To that end, I want the board and the community to know that we have closely monitored our, our attendance for both students and staff. Our attendance rates have been steady for the past month and have actually shown improvement over the last week. Our student attendance rates for week, week to week, day to day are, are slightly below a non-COVID year. So typically you have about ninety-three to ninety-four percent attendance during, during normal times or at about ninety to ninety-one percent. So we're, we're in really, we're in really good shape in that area. And we'll continue to, to navigate the nuances of that, of the pandemic fairly well. At least I think we have. Finally, to the board and the community, just as Mrs. Feldman did, I want to wish all of you a happy holiday season. One that is filled with good health and time for relaxation and enjoy your holidays. Thank you. Any questions? I like that.
Okay, student report. You're up.
Yeah, there you go. This Friday, there is gonna be a high school dance for the winter and for, for a fundraiser for the. The student council. There's, this week, there is a spirit week. So all the students are dressing up. With holiday, holiday characters and like pajama day and all the normal stuff. And the last day before Christmas break, there's gonna be a few events, I believe. For a little bit of holiday fun before we go for our vacation. And the National Junior Honor Society is having donations with St. Paul for a blanket drive. Yeah, that's all. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And now board report roundtable.
I just want, I just wanted to congratulate Danae and add a little something. She was a huge influence on my niece who did her student teaching here and then was a building sub for a year and then got hired this year as a kindergarten teacher. And Danae, I can't thank you enough how much you helped Sabrina. Thank you.
Okay, and I just wanted to, you mentioned it, Mr. Surticio, about the food drive that junior senior student council had. It was remarkable. They brought in Olivia Doctor came with a truckload of food. Every crevice was filled in her truck. It was, you know, we were packing it, and it was so appreciated. But not only that, the GLP and the Eden Elementary just participated in the Christmas sharing project that we have for people that come to our food pantry in Eden North Collins and the Eden North Collins Food Pantry, if you don't know, services, people just in our community. So they provided all kinds of wonderful gifts, and we started distributing those today, and I cannot tell you how much those things mean to people. Andrew Demont's class, the students decorated grocery bags with holiday designs and you know, it doesn't seem like a big thing, but it just brings a smile on people's face. So I am so proud of our students for all the love and caring that they're sending to people in their community. It's really impressive. And it just touches so many people's hearts. You have no idea. So congratulations to everybody who's been involved in all of this to help those less fortunate that are your neighbors. So thank you.
Ellen, do you have anything?
That Jessica was the was the ABC student athlete of the of the week after scoring twenty-seven and thirty-two points in in two games. And I certainly, the whole family was very proud of that, and it was nice to see her on ABC TV. It was very enjoyable.
So has she broke the record yet, or is it?
She has sixty-five more points until she breaks the record.
So Steph, Steph beat her then last night?
What?
Steph Curry beat her last night.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? I just want to wish everybody happy holidays. Please have a safe, safe holiday, and we'll see you again next year, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. So now, the next regular Board of Education meeting is January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. Now for executive session, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the history of a particular person.
What if I didn't second it? What would happen? No, just kidding.
All right, off to executive session. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Have a great night. Thank you.